Call to order. This Town of Griswold Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting, Griswold Town Hall on Main Street, December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Roll call. Tina Falk for Selectmen, Wayne Malin, Second Selectmen, to my right, to my left, Matt Danielock, Third Selectmen, and to his left, Lisa Wood, Executive Assistant. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the slides, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, Approval of Minutes. We have November 24th, 2025, Special Meeting Minutes and November 25th, 2025, Regular Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept both meeting minutes for the November 24th and 25th meetings.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, Correspondence. You have that in your packet.
Actually Tina, there was an item handed out from JCFU for correspondence. It was not in the packet, so it's not listed.
All right, Jewett City Fire Department, you have it as an extra on the side. All right, Matt, you have that?
I do.
Okay, for your review. I know you're just getting it, but... Any conversation regarding this?
Busy guys.
Yes.
Busy firehouse.
Yep, they are. Total calls, 609.
I mean, unless there is something that we need to discuss, I guess the only thing I would say is thank you.
Yes, a lot of work put into this.
To the Fire Department for responding to all these calls and taking care of our municipality.
I agree. Okay, Wayne?
I'm good.
Okay. Item number five, Old Business. A, Discussion and Possible Action on the Economic Development Committee and Non-Disclosure Agreement. Who'd like to lead off with that? I think that I would ask that we table this, especially since we are having a special meeting tomorrow afternoon to discuss the Economic Development Committee material.
I second the motion. I'll make a motion that we table this since we're having a 4:30 meeting tomorrow and discuss this exact same topic.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. Item 5A, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going home and have dinner.
Okay, I hope it's good. Okay, item 5B, Discussion and Possible Action on Additional Proposed Changes to Ethics Ordinance as Proposed by the Ethics Commission. And you both have the handout from Matt Willis where he did respond to two of the questions. That being the number of members on the committee. And then the other thing he addressed was removing executive session for closed session. But the third thing was, there's no response to the political parties. So if you would like, I can reach back out to Matt tomorrow and ask him for clarification on the topic of political parties.
Now, now that I'm reading this, it seems to me that they were looking for, when they make a motion or a decision on something, they want to have a four out of six instead of a four out of five. So it's not really a political party affiliation issue. It's that they wanted to have six people so they could have four out of six to make a decision than four out of five. They wanted an extra member. It had nothing to do with political parties.
I'm curious if, are they, do they sometimes struggle to get all five members at a meeting? Is that the concern? Does having a sixth member allow them to still have a forum without all six members?
Well, if you look at the addendum, 35-5A, Change, no more than three shall be members of the same political party to no more than four. So what how they want it to read is no more than four shall be members of the same political party.
That's, that's the point where I would push back. I don't see any reason why you can't move it to six if you're still going to make four the required number to, to vote on something as a majority. I think that you should maintain three at the most. Because then if you want, if it is truly a matter of ethics and not a matter of who's my group that I vote with, right, or who's, what side of this do I fall on, then you would need at least one member. Let's say that all of the members of that six are Democrat and Republican. Or even if there are some unaffiliated or independent voters on that Ethics Committee, you would need to convince at least one of them with the majority group to vote the same way on a topic. I can't see any benefit to making it be, making it no more than four instead of just leaving it no more than three with six total members.
Okay. We can, well, we can do one and/or two things. If you would like to reach out to Elizabeth Scannell and, or email her.
Yeah.
All right, you've got her email address there.
Yep.
And just ask what their thought process was, okay? And then you can bring that back to the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Happy to do that.
Are you okay with that, Wayne?
Yeah, I don't understand why it's a political issue of ethics. Yeah, the ethics position.
Okay. So do we need a motion for that?
I would make a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion that we have Matt Danielock reach out to the Commission Secretary, Elizabeth, to discuss the concerns that he has and get clarification on the addendum item 35-5A.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other part, the other question about this executive session or a closed session. How can I say this? Apparently during a ethics review about a year ago, they had this discussion. And I think maybe in that same email, we should be asking them where they get this closed session slash executive session.
Okay.
Difference, or what is the difference?
Well...
And I know Matt, I don't, Matt didn't put down here what could be a difference between a closed session and executive session.
He just simply says, the attorney states, a closed session would still be considered an executive session. So you might want to make that part of your...
I don't know if it's because it's an Ethics Commission thing.
Could be.
Everybody else is, is executive session.
Right. So that's...
Yeah, I can follow up on that as well. I mean, it's the same function either way. It's, they're literally just changing the title.
Mm-hmm.
So I can, I can address that with them and, and find out what thought process is there and let them know.
Okay.
What we have for information as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'm making another motion to add another question from Matt to ask the Ethics Commission Secretary about the closed session slash executive session question.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's these two documents. Item 5C, Discussion and Possible Action on Appointments of Richard Waszlik and James Barney as Members-at-Large of the School Building Committee with an effective date of 11/18/25.
Okay, it's been two weeks later. I don't think, Matt, you haven't had much time to make any adjustments to the website for posting.
Yeah, so I think the problem was that that, our last conversation about this fell immediately on, unfortunately, Lisa being away for a little bit and me having very limited time to get to know what, what we had to work with. We still don't have access to Facebook right now. I'm going to try and solve that problem tomorrow because I do think that it should be a town website and social media posting that, you know, goes out to the town to say, hey, here's what's available for Boards and Commissions. We need people to do this. So if you're interested, here's the deadline. So I would understand if we don't want to belabor it too long, but I also know it's not as if the School Building Committee has any hot plans right now. So it certainly could wait. I know they're not working on anything in particular at the moment based on the last year's worth of scheduled meetings.
Yeah, if I could just interject, though, Robin is concerned about getting her meeting dates into the town by the deadline. And she needs to have a meeting in order to get those meeting dates approved for 2026. And just so you do know, Boards and Commission vacancies are listed on the website under the tab Boards and Commissions on the top full-blown menu.
I did see that, man.
So, I mean, I know it's not huge, but it is there. There's more than just the School Building Committee on there.
Yeah, no, undoubtedly, that is the case. My point is simply that I don't think that we've sufficiently advertised it to allow. I bet if you could poll the entirety of the town, probably less than 200 people know that those vacancies exist. That's me just guessing, but it's probably a pretty slim number. So I'm, I'm torn. I understand Robin's wanted to get everything buttoned up. I mean, is it a requirement that those Members-at-Large be appointed prior to them selecting their dates in subwayman for 2026?
Well, the old committee is not effective once the new Board of Selectment is elected. That's the way the ordinance reads. They have to be served the same term as the Board of Selectment. So virtually, she has nobody on that board unless they've been recently appointed since November 17th. So I think her concern is maybe having a forum available in order to keep that.
My, my suggestion would be that we go ahead and act on these appointments, knowing that going forward for future appointments to Boards and Commissions, we reexamine the policy and the procedure going forward. But understanding the need for it now, I would probably suggest we take action on, on these two appointments.
Yeah, I mean, that, that seems, I, I went into this knowing we were probably going to talk about it in that frame because it, it has already been a little bit. And I do know that those need to get taken care of. And it's still just those two at-large seats. And it's still, it's Jim Barney and Rich Waszlik are the two letters of intent that we're interested that we have.
Reappointments.
Reappointments.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, well...
That's all I have. Todd, you worked for two of them before?
I was, I was going to put one in, but I was waiting for...
Yeah.
Well, I suggest you get it in.
Well, if they're going to do it tonight, I think they're...
Well, there's three members that have to be on that committee. I believe three Members-at-Large.
I think it should... I don't want to guide lunch.
Okay.
We could certainly look, but regardless of the number, I would make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Richard Waszlik and Jim Barney as Members of, at-large of the School Building Committee with an effective date of 11/18/25.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'd like to add to that to confirm whether it's two or three at-large.
Okay, so I have the ordinance in front of me on the School Building Committee as well as all of you do and other membership appointments. Six members at-large should be appointed by the Board of Selectment. So we're all one.
Okay.
Six members.
That's all.
We have two applicants.
So he'll get them one.
Okay.
We still have three vacancies.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Rich Waszlik and James Barney as two Members-at-Large. Are we in agreement with that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to number six, New Business. Discussion and Possible Action on 10 Tax Refunds for a total of $1,989.71 as presented by Leona Sharkey, Tax Collector.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 10 tax refunds for a total of $1,989.71 as presented by Leona Sharkey, Tax Collector.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6B, Discussion and Possible Action on Social Media Issues. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Nope.
6C, Discussion and Possible Action on Recent Community Investment Fund Meeting. And Wayne, I'll let you speak to this. I just, as a reminder, the Community Investment Fund, we had received a, a grant for the water infrastructure, the water portion of the infrastructure project. And we were informed, and we did a, a community notice, we did a informational, that we were, we were informed by the DECD in Hartford that because Heritage River was no longer going forward with their project, that the, those funds, the $8 million plus, would be withheld based on Heritage River exiting the deal. So we continued to pursue Hartford, trying to find ways that we could negotiate. And after many, many months, Wayne and I had a meeting with them. They actually came to Griswold last week. We did have a sit-down with them. Senator Summers was also present. It was a very positive meeting. And we're working together to find a path forward to receive some of that funding back. It's in the developing stages right now, so it is, it's a very positive note that I can say, so...
No, it was a good discussion. I agree, it was very good discussion. We don't have any goals or anything set up. The state's working on that. They're going to provide that to us and then we're going to work with them to get through it and...
Yeah. But they were much more positive than they have been in the past, so...
I think it's going to be a successful opportunity working with them.
I agree. I agree. Anything else?
Good.
No? All right, item 6D, Discussion and Possible Action on Post-Snowflake Parade Meeting. Wayne, I'll let you take this.
So we had a debrief on the snowflake parade that occurred a week and a half ago now. And we had a couple of issues. We had some complaints about some performance on one of the floats. It was not quite family-oriented. And then we had, unfortunately, we had an injury on one of our fire police. Got hit by a vehicle. So we wanted to get some action items. Todd was also involved in the discussion. So we came up with some action items to better protect the public when we have a parade going down Main Street or any of the streets. Todd brought up putting up some barricades, which is, is better than personnel and cones, actually. Because as I've noticed since I've been on fire police, it's getting quite crazy out there. You've got to have your head on swivel when you're looking.
Yeah.
Because people don't necessarily respect the person that's standing there trying to, you know, direct traffic or control traffic to protect people. So that was one of the action items. The other action item was the process for permits. We talked about how we're going to get permits for parades or any kind of access to shutting down streets or whatever like that. And Todd owns that because he is the, what's the title, Todd?
Legal Traffic Authority.
Legal Traffic Authority. So there's going to be a new process for that. He needs to have the plan come back to him that's approved from DOT. And that's really leads into a liability issue for the town. We need to have that to protect the town. And he's going to hold on to those records, but there won't be a new process coming out for people to need to know if they're going to file for a permit for permit for parades or is there going to be reason to ride tours? Is that just another reason to ride involved in that too?
It still involves pulling the highway use permit.
Yeah, they, they do the highway use. I would review their plan. But we have a multiple, multiple time plan, so it's usually approved.
Yeah, and homecoming parade.
Little League.
Any, yeah, Little League. Yeah, so it involves, it relates to all of them.
250th too. We've got something, I'm sure we got something with that too.
For the 250th, yes, yes.
And as far as the complaints about the individual performing, I would say unapproved, family-oriented things, that's being taken care of by the youth center director and prevent that from happening in the future. So, and he's come up with a process and a briefing sheet and a check-off sheet that they've used on other towns to prevent that from happening.
Right. Matt, anything?
No, I don't think so. I mean, to me, I, if we're going to have a parade, the barricade seemed like a no-brainer. But I figured you guys would figure that one out without me. I was not at that meeting, obviously.
No, I think there was a situation over here. We had one of the fire police at the start of the bridge before the parade began. And that person in the car did not want to wait, so they swerved around him.
Yeah.
And then proceeded to speed up Main Street. And there were, the high school chorus, high school choir was near the edge of the road. And it was, it was quite a scene, so...
Yeah.
The barricades, Public Works will put them up. They will take them down. And I just think that it will, if somebody wants to go through, they're going to have to go through a barricade, so...
We should put some tires bikes down too or something. Something really fun.
I hope it doesn't come to that, but...
Well, I don't know. Might have been an effective way to get the guy that went around the fire police guy.
Yeah. All right, anything else? If not, we will move on to number seven, any other business that may properly come before the board. I have nothing.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. Then we move on to item number eight, Public Forum. Do we have public forum? Yes. Yes.
Mary Duck Malin, 11P Quatero. To answer one of the questions on ethics regarding the closed-to-executive session, they're the only group that can call it a closed session. They have that right to call it a closed session.
The ethics.
Rather than ethic, rather than executive. And they do not need to post on their agenda if they're going into a closed session. You can go in and then they can say, we are closing the session now. And everybody has to leave except for who they will be speaking to that night. So they have that right. They're the only group that has that right to call it a closed session.
Okay.
And not to post.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
No, no problem. Just no problem.
No.
An issue.
Well, so I wonder then if that's just them, they're just saying, this is already what we call it.
They called it executive.
And they're just correcting it in the written.
And they had to be corrected that night.
Yeah.
To say, no, it was my attorney who corrected them a year ago. And to say they're a closed session.
Okay.
I do know at times they've struggled because they've had to, they have trouble sometimes getting a forum together. So I know at times they have struggled. So maybe that's why they want to increase one more to guarantee them some buffer. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to let you know the closed versus executive because it did come up a year ago. And again, my attorney was the one who also knows the town attorney very well, said they're the only group that can call it a closed session.
Closed session.
And they do not have to post it. You can go in and then they can decide at any time, we are closing this down now and everybody has to exit except for who they're speaking to.
Okay.
Just as a note for the record and for you guys because you might not be aware of this, any board can go into an executive session at any time. It does not have to be on the agenda by two-thirds of our majority vote. So if they're not calling it a closed, but in our case, we could go into executive session even if it is not listed.
At any time. Yep.
That is good to know.
All right.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
As long as it's on one of the accepted topics. The accepted items, yes.
Yes, Radson.
Does the public forum have to relate specifically to tonight's agenda or can it have other subjects?
Two minutes if you have another subject. Two minutes, please.
My first question was, I thought, I heard Phil Anthony died, so does the town pull up flags or anything?
No, we are still waiting. We are aware that Phil Anthony passed.
Yeah.
We still are waiting to hear anything on, on arrangements. There's been no discussion, so we're watching closely.
Okay, now, second thing. You mentioned fire police and somebody driving through. Right, if they tell you to stop, you stop. But I saw, witnessed the situation where a fire policeman was taking a closed road and stopping everybody. And a fella came along who owned the house up the road. And he says, I own the house up the road. And so it was, what was the Irish fellow's name? That's, not Sarason, I can't think of his name now. Lived on that road, Griswold. And so the fellow said, I'm going to my house. And he drove around and he had to jump out of the way. And then the guy went up to his house. So is there such a thing as a situation where if the police is stopping, a resident who owns property that's involved with the stoppage, can he supersede or, or whatever that's called? But the...
I think, I think it depends on the situation.
Discretion of the, of the fire police person. Because I've been in that situation where, because we usually are up a lot farther. If there's an accident on the road, we're much farther up. By the next time we point somebody down the road, they go around it.
Yeah.
And if they say, hey, I'm at that house right there, two houses down, they're not near the accident, yeah, we can let them go through so they can get to their house.
Right.
But I've also had people lie to me and go down there and run into the state trooper that's at the accident and turn them back around.
So they'd have the right to go through?
Yes.
With permission.
With permission from the fire police.
Yeah.
Correct.
And, and the other question I have, I went through, through the voluums the other day. Todd has quite a pile of, of buildings there. Are they sold back to construction companies, Todd?[1620.14] Are they sold back to construction companies, Todd, or?
Are they what?
The buildings.
Are they sold back?
Now, we, we screen that with the gravel, mix it in, and we use it on projects.
Oh, you use it yourself? You must have, what, seven thousand yards there?
Probably three or four thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
We screened about five hundred. We use that this year.
They what?
We screened about five hundred. We use that this year.
All right, is there any other public forum? Yes.
Cheryl Canova, fifty-two Diamond Lane. As far as the political piece or ethics, I don't believe there should be any political piece because, I mean, you can have the parties, but that's, they have to be biased for nonpartisan. They can't, political, it doesn't matter what you do. And that's just my opinion.
Well, Matt?
Yeah, and I, and I, to that point, Cheryl, I do agree, right? It shouldn't, that shouldn't be involved in ethics, right? That's kind of my point, though, is the, how do you prevent it from, right? How do you put a guardrail there to say, there's no way it can be? And it's, and it's to never allow there to be more of one group than the other in that, in that mix, I think is the only way you could ever, I mean, we'd like to trust that everyone that, that wants, that is appointed to the ethics is capable of putting that stuff aside, but I don't know that that's always the case. So it's really just.
Like a jury.
Yeah, yeah, like a, to me, it's more like a safety measure than anything.
Right. I've always looked at it from a different aspect, that, that, really, that wording is in there so that you ensure that there's representation from the lesser party. Instead of looking at it from more of, you know, there's four of this big party, you wanna secure, make sure that both parties have a chance to serve so that allows for the lesser amount.
Yeah.
If you look at it that way.
Yeah, my thought is if you're gonna go that far, go one step further and make it so that there's no chance of that being the case. Because you don't need to control the whole board, you just need to control the voting majority in order to have a group of people that can get their agenda across or, or whatever the case may be, if you were in a situation with ethics where that was something that was happening.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to comment on that. That should be across the board, you know, not just ethics, everybody, that should be the same mindset for any board, that, you know, there shouldn't be a political.
What was your name?
Ah, Laurie Soder, sixty-seven Ashland Street. Sorry about that, Lisa. But my, my question, I guess, is about the school building committee. Can you just tell me? I was surprised to hear that there's six at-large. So what is the total composition of that?
Let me find it, I'll read it to you.
Twelve.
So it says it is comprised of one member chosen by the board of selectmen, one member chosen by the board of finance, one member chosen by the P&amp;G Commission, which they tabled last night, two members chosen by the board of education, six members at-large to be appointed by the board of selectmen.
Okay. For a total of, six, three, five, six, five, seven, eight, nine, nine, maybe?
No, more than that. Six and two is eight and three is eleven.
I gotta go back.
Okay.
One more, one, two, six. All right, just curious, because I was surprised at that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other public forum? Yes, Dave.
Dave View, fifty-nine Leah Avenue, before I forget. Are you going to post for four other members to be appointed by the board of selectmen? Or does that mean Todd and I should get our letters in now?
I think, I think, given that we are, we are having this conversation only to realize that we're still four short and Robin can't get her, her meetings in, I think we're happy to take as many volunteers as are willing right now until we, until we hit our, our number. But I will, now that we know exactly where we stand, absolutely put that information out so, tomorrow, so that people can get it. Because even if you and Todd do it, we still need two more.
Yeah, we were previously on it, it's just our appointments ran out when the board of selectmen swapped.
Well, as the guy who got picked to be on it, let's go, boys. I'd be happy to have you. And a couple more people out there, too, if you're, for all six people that are watching the live stream right now.
Any other public forum?
Can I just make one more comment? I'm sorry, Laurie Soder, sixty-seven Ashland. I, it's probably a no-brainer, but I think that when we, when we put opportunities out there, that we should kind of describe what the committee does or what the expectations are of that person so that.
Yeah.
They know what they're.
Agreed, I think we need to, yeah.
Putting in for, just some kind of, you know.
Yeah, what the responsibility is going to be, the expectation, absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah, you're right, that's one thing, just to list, oh, we need.
Right.
Two members for this thing, right? But if you have no idea what it does, how would you?
Correct.
Say I do or don't want to do that.
And for those of you who are watching and here in the room, and I, everybody's wondering what on earth is she wearing? I'd like to explain, we, we being, there was a football game, Thanksgiving Day football game between Griswold, our Griswold team, and Plainfield. And the first selectmen from Plainfield and I had a little running bet, a little agreement that whichever team lost, they would wear the opposing team's jersey. And I had a Griswold sweatshirt ready for the Plainfield selectmen. And he wasn't quite ready for me, but he did show up today with the Plainfield jersey. And I agreed, I, I did put it on while he was there and I agreed to wear it. And then he said, do you have a meeting tonight? And I said, yes, we do have a meeting tonight. And I said, maybe, just maybe, I'll wear it. So that is why I'm wearing the Plainfield football jersey, but it doesn't have shoulder pads, which, you know? So, yeah.
They won?
I'm sorry?
They won?
Yes, it was a very close game.
One point.
Yeah, very, very close. Yeah, yes.
And why do you have, you don't have a helmet, either?
I know, I know. We, we had some fun with it today, but it was, it was all in, in good sportsmanship, so we were happy about that.
So come to find out, Tina's a Yankee fan. That was hard for you to say. And, and I'm a Red Sox fan, we found out on Thanksgiving Day while we were doing the dinner.
I wanted to sign the back of his coat, he wouldn't let me.
And then come to find out Todd's a Red Sox fan, so I don't know how that works out.
No, it doesn't.
But anyway, so we made a, made a bet for this coming season that, you know, whoever wins the season between the Yankees and the Red Sox, so I think they play eighteen games between each other during the season, you know, the other person, same thing, the other person's better wear the jersey if it didn't win. So that'll be next year.
I think we shook on it, too.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
I like it, I like it. Now, I, I have to pull up the CIAC schedule, maybe we can get Kevin back, because I bet you the Grizzle varsity boys basketball team would put a whooping on Plainfield right now. Screw it, let's get a scrimmage going. Let's get, let's get, let's get Kevin in a Grizzle jersey. I bet, I bet Mo's got a couple lying around you can borrow.
I hear you're willing to wear the jersey if, if Griswold should lose this time.
What do you mean?
I'm just saying.
Oh, Grizzle's not losing to Plainfield, let's go. Not, not in basketball.